Good evening. This is Tuesday, December fourteenth, oh my god. Twenty twenty-one meeting of the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As a preliminary matter, please note this meeting is being recorded, and that some of the attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that folks may be able to see you. The ugly band t-shirt you decided to wear tonight? There are anything you intend to or not, screen share on your computer. Anything you broadcast will be captured and recorded forever and ever, and will possibly wind up as a TikTok video to be shared amongst your friends and neighbors. This is Tom Sanford, Chair of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and participants, persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me prior to me calling the meeting to order. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jay Teach.
Here.
Timothy Wheeler.
Yeah.
Carolyn McDonald.
Here.
And Tom Sanford here. Anticipated speakers will get to you when their time comes. Uh, I will call your name. With a quorum of the board present, I call this meeting to order at seven forty-three PM Tuesday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. This is an open meeting of the Planning Board being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, twenty twenty-two to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public can be found at the Town of Berlin website. The Governor's order suspends the requirement of an open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location, and allows us and encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening using the Zoom platform, as posted on the agenda, which includes links for the public to join this meeting. Leading ground rules, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I'll invite the board members by name to provide any comments, questions, penetrating insights, and/or motions. Please hold all your insights till your name is called. Board members and speakers on the agenda, please remember to mute your telephone or computer when you're not speaking. Please speak clearly to ensure accurate minutes are recorded. For any response, please wait until you yield the floor to state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in conversation with one another, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you for your understanding and cooperation. So, at this moment, can I entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the meeting? Actually, the last two meetings, as posted by-
Well, almost, because I wasn't, I missed the last meeting, I think, didn't I?
You did miss the meeting.
I'm gonna be doing some video watching, I think, but-
Okay.
So, did you take any notes? Did you take any notes from the last meeting?
I don't think anyone did.
Um, just very little.
Yeah, well, what's the video?
Yeah.
Get cut up.
Well, I will make a motion to accept the two sets of minutes. I think they were both from October?
Yeah, when was October twelfth? But I'm looking at the minutes from the twenty-sixth, and it says we accept the votes already. I guess, so it's just the twenty-sixth. And then we're missing the one in November, then I'm gonna have to go get the video.
Okay.
But the cool thing is the minutes for tonight, because I'm copying over the one from twenty-sixth, already says, item number two, A and R review for lot line change on Gates Pond Road. Look at that. Don't even change the title.
They're coming before us, because we, we took that up last meeting and could not complete it.
Right, this is a different tonight.
Different one, just from the twenty-sixth.
There's two A and Rs on Gates Pond.
Got it.
Right.
There's one for the auto farms and the, and the other one is further down.
Right. Uh, so-
Motion, do I have a second?
Okay.
I have a motion in a second to accept the minutes for our October twenty-
Six.
Thank you, twenty-sixth meeting. Any discussion? Doesn't look like any. I will call the I'll call a vote. Uh, Jay Teach.
Hi.
Timothy Wheeler. He's muted. Oh, he's on the phone.
On the phone.
Carolyn McDonald.
Hi.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Thank you. Motion carries. Alrighty, so we've got that. Um, there wasn't any um, there's a bunch of mail, but most of it was just, you know, notices and stuff, our normal crap. Um, there is one thing that we'll talk about, we'll take it up at the timely items for discussion, because it needs a little bit more of a discussion than it just simple. Uh, you have to know, so, um, is Seth listed in the audience? He's our first on auto farms. And, uh-
No, so Eloise and Lynn Ryan, and then someone named Karen, and someone from David E. Ross.
Okay, David E. Ross, Weather Gates Pond, so, um- We can take him out of order, I guess. The other guy's ready to go.
Right, they're not posted at or anything.
Eight. So. But it's an A and R.
Right.
You wanna take up that one first?
Sure.
Okay, can you promote, um, the gentleman from David E. Ross?
I can.
Please? I sent this plan around earlier. I emailed it around earlier.
Is that, this is, this is the one that went today?
Yes, this is the one for, um- The owner is David P. Brennan, one fifty-nine Gates Pond Road. Hello, Kevin, how are you?
Good evening, how are you doing?
I'm good, thank you.
Um, my name is Kevin Conover, I'm from David Ross Associates, and this evening I represent David Brennan for an approval not required plan on the subtly cited Gates Pond Road. Um, this A and R plan proposes to create two parcels, parcel A and parcel B. Um, they're basically for, uh, to encompass, uh, use encroachments on each of the neighbor's property. Um, we're not creating any zoning violations, we're not, uh, creating any uh, reduction in the frontage of the parcels. Um, as noted on the plan, parcel A and parcel B are not building lots, but they're gonna be combined to an next with adjoining property owners. Um, this is a, just a conveyance to correct, like I said, an existing usage issue. And, uh, we, um, we, uh, hope that the, the Planning Board will approve this A and R as presented.
Timothy has to get on his side to look at the plan.
You know what to do. On the upper right, if you have, uh, Acrobat on the upper right-hand corner, you can push a button that says, uh, enable editing. Does it show up on your screen?
Kevin, do you have a, a right-side plan that you can share?
I do not have a, a, a share, a plan to share at this time, no.
If you can find that button and push it, you can, uh, rotate it.
Well, the nice thing is that I, I, uh, I can expand the text and read the, the text block in this long form. This is fantastic. And most of you look, um, unusually lopsided now, but I still look fine.
Look like you're in a space capsule or something there, Tim.
I'm on my way to the moon.
Uh, Tom, would you like me to share? Hold on, what's going on here?
So, A is not a building lot. But the parcel is to be conveyed to and annexed with lot one. Five point three six.
So apparently, in free Acrobat reader, you can't rotate it.
There's no way to, it's, it's read only when it comes in the email, but you have to enable
Oh, let me try that.
To be able to rotate it. That was the trick that I didn't realize first time around. Bet you can.
Hmm.
So lot two's, two's got a hundred feet of frontage plus, right?
Yeah, the proposal is not to change any of the, the lot frontages. The lots were originally created on a plan um, that's recorded at the Registry of Deeds in nineteen ninety-nine. So, uh, again, we're just creating two parcels adjacent to the existing house.
Yeah, we just need to make sure that you're not monkeying with the area to drop below the required amount for a hundred-foot lot, that's all, so. But you're fine on that one, but it is-
It's one foot short, isn't it?
Huh?
Isn't it one foot short? It's eighty point seven five plus twenty-three point two four. Oh, no, it's twenty.
That's a hundred and-
Oh, it's a hundred and three. A hundred and three.
So, but, but you've got acreage enough, so we're fine with a hundred-foot lot. The other one's got, what, a hundred and seventy-five?
So are they both coming off of lot, what's listed here is lot two? Are both pieces coming off of that?
Nope, um, parcel A is coming out of land that was owned, um, on lot two by the Rusces. Um, parcel, um, and parcel B is coming out of land that is currently owned by David Brennan. Yep, so it's just a partial swap.
Oh, so they're swapping, I, I got it now.
Exactly, exactly. It's not an equal swap, uh, just because, uh, of, you know, the use and the, the items that we wanted to keep together, but uh, again, it's well in excess of the minimum, um, area requirements.
But only the structures on lot one were in non-compliance, is that the issue?
No, it's not, it's none of this, um, well, when you say structures, there was an existing garage behind, um, the owner of lot one. And they had some, as you can see, we're showing the, the, the tree line. The tree line basically depicts the, the reason for the conveyance. Okay, the parcels are attempting to follow that tree line. Uh, so we can, you know, keep the same, the, the use of, of, of the property on the owner of the property's lot, so. The tree line is basically, um, what we've tried to do is, is, uh, is create the parcels adjacent to that.
Right, so parcel B will become part of lot two, but originally was part of part of lot one. And parcel A was part of lot two and is now gonna become part of lot one.
That is correct.
Yeah, it's a wonky way to, for them to have split it to begin with.
Well, I agree with that. Again, uh, we weren't part of that original, um, division. Um, and, uh, so we're just trying to, again, just correct a, a use issue that, that exists on, on the properties.
So technically, to get away with a one-hundred-foot frontage, you need to have, oh, you need to have two hundred thousand
Yeah, they're all-
feet, but if you add parcel B, that gets you there, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. Right.
Is there a structure on lot two?
There is, it's, it's, the proximity is closer to Gates Pond Road. It's maybe a hundred to two hundred feet off of Gates Pond Road. So, we're, we're not creating any zoning violations in that regard. In addition, the septic system is also located in that area as well, so we're not creating any border health issues as well.
Good.
So I'm just a little confused. Oh, are these the two? This is like six houses away from me. And I'm just confused, so I know where the Collatios live. And, and I know where Robin Berry lives. Are both of these lots um, up the shared driveway?
The, the one, the owner of lot one is off of the shared driveway, the owner of lot two was not. To my knowledge.
So it's a common driveway?
Well, uh, again, we're, we're just changing lot lines.
Yeah, I know you are.
Touching anything with, uh, with a common driveway access issues, um, uh, frontage issues, we're just creating, um, two parcels.
Okay, so you're not gonna answer my questions to whether it's a legal common driveway?
It was, it was an approved common driveway back in the late nineties. Um, you know, they have to obtain building permits for this, this, this property, so. Um, I did not look into that issue, whether it's an approved common driveway, under the assumption that they wouldn't have obtained, um, occupancy permits without that.
Well, oddly enough, there's no provision in the bylaw for two lots to be served by a common driveway, you have to have more than two.
Oh, I think-
It may be water over the dam anyway, so.
Um, lot two. Are they did they buy that house within the past six months or so?
I believe that's a recent, recent purpose, purchase, correct?
Yeah, so that's, um, Kevin Diggins' old house. Okay, now I understand. Now I understand. And, yes. Okay. Yeah, and the existing garage is probably built about seven or eight years ago. Okay.
Are there any other questions?
I'm just finishing reading the ten statements. Um, okay, I'll make a motion that we a creation of uh, two parcels, parcel A and parcel B, both not to be considered a building lot on parcel land off of Gates Pond Road prepared for David Brennan by Ross Associates. Uh, where's the date? Eleven twenty-two twenty-one. Um, booking page. Okay, book, um, forty-one thirty-two one oh one and what am I looking at?
I think forty-four oh ninety-five.
What is the question?
I was trying to get the-
Booking page.
Well, we got F seventeen parcel one twelve, can we use that?
It's forty-four oh ninety-five dash one twelve.
Yeah, use that. Approval under the subdivision control are not required.
Are you done with your motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I will second it then.
Okay, I have a motion in a second for, uh, these two parcels to be uh, approved under the approval not required under subdivision control. Are any other discussion? Questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask you to vote on this motion. And I need to call the roll. Jay Teach.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, so we need to figure out the fee, and then we need to figure out how we're gonna get this around to get everybody signed. We can sign this up. I mean, I can run this plan around this week, but I can't do it till the end of the week. Are you guys, anybody, everybody around this weekend?
I have to work Saturday till three, but other than that, I'm around.
Have to work till three?
Yep.
If I come after three, you'll be all set?
Yep.
Okay. I can do that. Mister, uh, Teach, are you around?
Yeah, to take his doc out.
Yeah, if you want to come help me pick the doc out.
Please, we're all worried about it.
Long ride, and I don't own a chainsaw.
What is it, seventy-five bucks?
Um, I thought it was fifty, and then twenty-five and twenty-five.
Fifty for the first, we, we creating two lots, we creating-
You're, you're affecting two lots, you're not creating anything.
Right.
But you're affecting two lots.
So is it fifty for the first and twenty-five for the second? So it's seventy-five.
Okay.
I buy that.
All right.
So can someone just, uh, contact my office when the, the plan's been signed, so we can go and pick it up?
Yeah, so we'll have to trade you for the check. So if you can have a check for seventy-five.
What do we give a check for, a hundred?
Oh, seventy-five.
We gave it for seventy-five.
Huh? You didn't give me, there's no check with the part, the package that's here.
Okay, I thought we did file a check with that, no?
Um, if you did, I don't see it. There wasn't anything in the package, and then there was no note, Eloise said she received it on the twenty-third, but there was no note for, um-
Eloise is in the audience.
We did, uh, we did a transmittal, and I believe we submitted a check.
All right, and the transmittal, you got a Form A signed, copy of A and R signed, twenty-four by thirty-six full-size, twenty-four by full, uh, thirty-six mile hour. No mention of a check.
Okay. All right.
You got two paper copies, Tom?
I got two paper copies in the mile hour.
Okay.
Eloise, did you get a check?
I plead the fifth.
Okay.
But I'll have a great Christmas.
Enjoy your seventy-five-dollar Christmas dinner.
That's for the whole family.
Yeah.
So Kevin, I'll get this, uh, done over the weekend. And it'll be in our mailbox, um, down in Town Hall, but I'll let you know on Monday.
Okay, that, that sounds fantastic. Thank you very much for your time.
No problem, thank you.
Have a good holiday.
Have a good evening, happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Good night. Okay, um, is Seth in the audience? No?
No.
So we still have the same issue. He said he was gonna come on and explain to us what was happening on our, uh, auto farm parcels. Um, he said it was self-explanatory on the plan, but we, we didn't think so. So, I let him know by email, and, uh, that's where we're at. So we can move on. If he shows up, then we can take him up.
Which meeting? That was like the October twenty-sixth meeting, right?
Or it does.
Yes, it was. Come explain it, right?
Exactly, and then we, we were supposed to, somebody was supposed to come on last meeting, and no one showed up, and we just passed it over, and here we are again.
So, if, if we receive a plan and don't act on it within a certain amount of time, it's approved, right?
Uh, for a subdivision, I don't know about an A and R.
Hmm, let's should look at our flow chart.
I wonder if we should, we should
Deny it?
Well, I don't know if deny it. We, we ought to acknowledge in the minutes that, um-
We have twenty-one days.
Yeah.
Or-
Or action deemed approved.
Wow.
Did I ever send you the checklist, Carolyn? The, or I didn't, the flow chart? I got a flow chart.
There's a flow chart, I would love a flow chart.
That's a nice one.
I'm sending it right now.
Well, what's your pleasure?
I don't think we wanna deny it, because I think that, that's, that flaw, that's flawed too.
Okay.
Well, if we deny it, can they resubmit?
Well, yeah, but, yeah, I don't, I don't wanna have it get messy that way, and I don't wanna approve it because we don't understand it. So somehow we just need to say
Do we postpone the vote?
Well, but the action that we took was to ask for further information and to continue-
Yeah, so let's just say that we're, we're voting to continue. So I move that we continue action on this item till a time when the proponent can participate in the discussion. How about that?
Should we take a vote, make it formal?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. So, we have a proposal to postpone.
Second.
And it's been seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. Uh, I'm gonna go backwards this time. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimously to postpone the action. Okay? So there was another, uh, thing that was emailed to us. This is the next item. Can we take that up now? I suppose we can.
Um, you mean, Jay checked the email?
Jay checked the email and sent me some items prior to me putting the agenda together.
Awesome.
I get daily emails from the security, cybersecurity people
Yep.
Saying, Tom, what's up with you? You're supposed to have completed your assessment or something.
Yeah, mine say, John, you should have, you should-
That's an unfounded mandate, I'm not doing it. Hire somebody to do it. Um, so, we had an email sent, uh, somebody was asking if there was a final site approval for the mall, for where Sears was in the mall. And do we have it on record?
It was a final site, site plan?
Yeah. Was that something the planning board did, or was that something that went through?
In the- In the nineties.
Yeah, oh yeah, was when they built it.
It would be in that, um, file cabinet by the, by the escape, fire escape door.
Okay, our records room. So, do the planning board have that as a action item?
The planning board did site plan, yeah, for Solomon Pond. Like we did site plan for Highland Commons, yeah.
Highland Commons, okay. All right.
So this, what are they, they're trying to figure out with the-
I'm assuming, there was nothing other than they, they asked the planning board if we had, um, site approval. Final site approval.
They must be trying to figure out what to do with that building.
Yeah, I would imagine. It was from, um, uh, a developer, right? You have the email, don't you?
Jay.
Um, just looking for it.
You sent it to me last Thursday.
Yeah. Oh, here it is. We were advised to check the planning board to see if there was a copy of the final approved site plan on file for the above men, men mentioned property. Set Sears at five twenty-one Lynch Boulevard.
And it's from a developer, right?
It's from Deshawn Burns, who does not identify him or herself as anything.
Oh, I thought there was a-
Oh, okay, here it says, it says at bureauveritas.com.
Hmm.
Well, the Economic Development Committee met with the new, I guess we'd call her mall manager from the entity that's acquired the mall from Simon. And they met with her last week. And I missed the conversation with her when I tuned in, but um, she's very bullish about the possibility of pumping some life into the facility. Um, and the outfit that she works with, who I don't know the name of, deals with malls that are troubled, but that have a, a viable future in their mind, and so they don't get involved, I guess, unless they think there's road forward, so. Um, she was according to the Economic Development Committee folks, she was positive, I guess, about some of the steps that they might take, so. I imagine that people may be looking at that satellite tire battery facility that Sears had as an independent standalone that they might want to do something with. And I am, the, the, the language for that might be pretty, pretty tight. That's where, you know, I think our conversations about come to us sooner rather than later about being proactive so we can perhaps make some modifications to those, to the overlay that would allow you some flexibility in the uses that could be placed on some of those sites because.
Because that would have to happen at town meeting, right?
I would, yeah, if it's, if it's, if it's similar, but you know, not less, not more detrimental, you can probably argue we have some authority, but I imagine the things they want to do are probably outside of the list that we initially allowed.
Because like I can see that being a Jiffy Lube or something like that.
Yep. And of course Sears owns their own pad. So they're, they're working independently from Simon and the new owner of the mall mall. Really? So Sears owns their own pad, Penny's owns their own pad. Macy's and Macy's owns their own pad, yeah. Regal must lease from, from Simon and now the new, new landlord, I, I would imagine. And there was the fourth pad, but I, New England Development never flipped that. That was going to be Jordan's, Jordan Marsh. But that never got flipped, I don't imagine. So that probably remains the, under the ownership of the new landlord.
The organization, the, the person who sent me the email comes from, what they do here in one sentence is we support our clients in making buildings and infrastructures safe, sustainable and resilient.
Worthy goals.
That's all it says. It doesn't say, here's what we're gonna do with the building.
Anyway, that's what I know.
Is if we, if we have a plan, we obviously can charge them for a copy of it, right?
Yeah, it's huge, probably.
Oh, yeah, right.
It's probably.
Multiple pages.
Deck.
Or do they would just want to come in and look at it, but they want to know if you have it first? Because I've definitely had people do that for consideration.
They take pictures of it.
Right. Because I'm sure they don't need the whole plan because the whole plan would be for the whole mall.
Right.
But if they're just looking for a Sears.
Yeah.
So I guess the answer is once you locate it, say, yeah, we got it. What now?
Right. So you're pretty sure it's down there, Tim?
Well, there's a ton of stuff in that file.
Okay.
And the, and I think the third drawdown is all the rolled up stuff. And those should be those site plan, because it'll show the permissible building area, the permissible parking area, you know, it sort of zones out that, that permissible area for height above X, you know, so where the dome was is, is earmarked in there too. Yeah.
What was the fourth pad?
It was gonna be between Regal and Sears that, you know, when you come in from the parking lot and there's not parking lot right up to the building on the backside.
Yep.
That was gonna be Jordan Marsh.
Huh.
But then Jordan Marsh fell apart and got picked up by Macy's, so.
Right.
Then there was a, probably ten years ago, remember there was a proposal, somebody wanted to come in and do something there. They're gonna build a two-story adjacent piece to the mall.
Yeah, Lifestyle Center.
Yeah, it was a Lifestyle Center, yep.
That was prior to, yeah, they were, they were coming in before, well, about the same time as Highland Commons?
No, they, well, it was about the same time as Natick Collections.
Yeah.
So by Lifestyle Center, you mean apartments?
No, not necessarily. They were more of like the upscale part of where, you know, the Natick Mall, Natick Collections is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That type of thing.
Like a condo kind of thing, but attached to the mall.
They weren't talking housing.
No, they were talking retail.
Yeah, retail.
Huh, maybe I don't know what. Because I know there's housing over at the Natick Collection, yeah.
No, they were trying to figure out a strategy to have it more free flowing and, and you know, it was almost like there'd be utilization of some of the outside, you know, not, not, not an enclosed, entirely enclosed. You know, maybe with a concourse that flowed in. I mean, that's, I mean, what Highland Commons did was sort of back to the more traditional, but I mean, they, Highland Commons might almost call themselves a Lifestyle Center, I suppose. My suspicion is that Lynn has some questions. Whether she raises her hand or not, and I have some information that pertains to some of her questions.
Is Lynn with us? She's on mute.
I have the impression this is a French company or French person.
What does Veritas mean?
Truth.
Right, that's what I thought. So Veritas in Latin means truth. It was, was that, that was part of the name of the company, right?
Right.
Yeah. It's kind of a French name, Bureau Veritas.
Latin. Well, it's Latin. What's the first name of the company? Bureau, like, like dresser?
Or like office, business.
The Department of Truth. What'd you say, Tom?
Said very dubious.
Yeah, right?
So who should go look for the, or what's the next thing? What are we gonna do? Somebody should go look for the plans?
Yeah.
That the clerk, the chairman, or one of the members?
Clerk.
Do I even like a key or anything to that? I didn't even know that.
It's wide open.
When it's not, until it's not, yeah. Right, during the day, the building's open until what, like nine, I think?
Nine AM?
PM. Oh, you farmers. Nine AM, I'm like opening an eye if I don't have to be to work.
Well, I would give it a try.
I mean, I can get on it, Jay, if you want. I, I just won't be able to do it before the weekend.
And it is locked up, but you have a fob.
I have a fob.
Yeah.
Well, they've been waiting for a while, so that's probably not an issue.
Okay.
Would you like me to give them your contact information or just say we'll look for it and get back to you?
You sent me the email. You forwarded me the email. I can email back.
Okay.
So I'll tell them I'm looking for it. How do we nudge Lynn?
I'll start talking and we'll see if it gets her excited.
Because, right.
What else is on the agenda?
So we have that and then the, we have the timely items, which this is probably a timely item. We have the CNPCR proposal. And then we have to figure out how we're gonna pay the bill for the housing consortium deal.
So Lynn has asked on a number of occasions on behalf of the ZBA about pre-existing non-conforming uses and their expansion. So I said to the building inspector, we used to have a cap. Like you could not increase a pre-existing non-conforming use more than fifty percent. And it got taken out of the bylaw back a while ago now.
Okay.
And we, and, and so I said to him, what do you find in the other towns that you deal with? And he said, you really are in a tight spot because the courts probably wouldn't back you up in his experience if you tried to put a cap that covered any pre-existing non-conforming use and its expansion. He said, because you're he just said it, it hasn't succeeded in the towns that he's familiar with. So I think Lynn wants to talk about that. But she doesn't know about my conversation with the building inspector and his notion that you, you really, if you tried to impose that, you probably wouldn't get too far. You've, you've probably got to look at the merits of the case. And if the lot is a certain size and it can't meet the green area requirement and setbacks and stuff through the expansion that it wants to add, then you just say, no, you can't. And if they've got plenty of land and they want to increase their pre-existing non-conforming use, they can. Now, most of the pre-existing non-conforming uses that we got that are commercial would be in small little pockets of land that probably have problems if they've tried to expand. I mean, like Village Power is a eight, thirteen thousand square foot lot with a three thousand square foot building, you know, I mean, it's, you can't do, the side lot lines are already, you know, to the extreme, the frontage requirement can't be met, the green area, you know, so if, if we wanted to expand, I think we'd go in and the ZBA would say no. And I think they'd be justified. So I think that's the way he feels about the the notion of putting a, a cap back into place. And that it very, might very well be that Tater realized that and that's why we pulled it back out of the bylaw years ago. So that's what I know about that one. She's still on mute, you know?
She is still on mute. I wonder.
I also talked to the building inspector about battery storage facilities. Batteries in the sense of, of energy. Electric energy storage from the grid to, to supplement the grid in those times when either power wasn't being produced by the the non-traditional sources, you know, whether it's solar or wind or whatever. And he said that there's a, there's a gentleman that approached him and said, what's Berlin's position on the location of these within the town? And he's, this individual is lining up properties throughout central Massachusetts because the, and I've been approached actually by a company that said, we want to, interested, we want to know if you're interested in allowing us to lease five thousand square feet of property so we can do a battery storage facility on that site. And so I said to Central Mass, has anybody run into this battery storage issue? And the folks from Charlton, where they've got probably six or seven solar fields now, said that they do have. Did she say provision? I, they, they've been, what these are is they're independent of solar fields. So, you know, the, the question I had is, are they, is the notion down the road that these are going to be spaced within communities as a utility in order to provide supplemental backup power to, to fit into the grid, not just associated with solar fields, but independent of those. So you, and then if that's the case, you know, where would they be located? Would, would you end up with one, you know, behind the town offices? Would you end up with one down at the transfer station, you know, that sort of thing? And could the municipality benefit from the lease of the land?
So it's similar to like the telephone switchgear.
Yeah.
That are around. Just a little bit bigger buildings.
Yeah, and so there's, there's obviously some provisions that you'd want to put into place in regard to, you know, screening and safety issues and, and decommissioning and all that sort of stuff. So I said to Charlton, I'll be in touch with you because they've evidently been thinking about it. And I think they've written some stuff into their bylaw. And, and Richard thought that the town needed to be proactive about it rather than he said someone's gonna come and start knocking on your door saying they want to cite one of these. And if, if you don't have any provision for it, what are, what are you gonna say, you know?
Well, we can put that on the annual.
Yeah.
Lynn is unmuted.
Oh, good.
Is she there?
Oh.
Now, the other the other question was non-criminal disposition of zoning violations.
Non-what?
Non-criminal disposition of zoning violations. So Margaret asked, in our, in our bylaw, we say that there's a maximum fine of three hundred dollars per incident on it, and an incident is defined as a daily event. So if someone's in violation, you can fine them up to, but no more than three hundred dollars. So the building inspector said that what he does in the towns where he's had to impose a fine is he starts at like twenty-five dollars a day, that sort of thing. And but it can over time escalate if someone isn't responsive. And he's only had to go to court a couple of times when someone's refused to pay a fine and correct the, the problem. And, and Margaret said, well, is it, is what we have in our zoning enough essentially to allow him that flexibility to impose a fine if he thought he needed to? Given that in the regular zoning, I mean, in the regular town bylaw, there's provision for a fine to be levied, a ticket essentially. And he said that he feels that what we've got is sufficient and that it's similar to what he's used in other communities. So he, he felt comfortable if he needed to, that he could impose a fine and that the way the statute reads between the town bylaw and the zoning bylaw, he'd be able to accomplish what he needed. So I thought I'd let you know about that too.
But there's a limit of three hundred hours per day or per?
Per, per day.
Per day.
If it really escalated.
Right.
Yeah, he said he he went to the, to court one time and the judge essentially said, why are you wasting these people's time? Pay this, you know, and get out of here to the guy. He just said, you know, the, the town has obviously tried to work with you and, and you're being blind to your responsibility. So get out of my court, pay your fine. And I, Richard, I mean, like he said, he's only had to impose fines a couple of times. So it's not like it's gonna happen very often, but it's, what we've got is sufficient. The other one is noise. And this has come up with 19 Carter and the concert series and complaints by neighbors that the that the sound level exceeds the zoning by law regulation, which is 50 and 55 decibels or something like that. So Margaret said she'd like us to look at that. And I I when we talked to the building inspector, we sort of came away with the question of whether in in this instance, noise ought to be taken up as a general by law rather than a zoning by law. There's zoning by law, noise issues that relate to construction and
Right.
You know, Solomon Pon Mall, but the the way our and Lynn can comment on this because the ZBA. The the way they interpreted the zoning by law was that it 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 had implications for any noise in any part of town on any situation in any situation and not just construction. If you look at the the way the language reads, it talks about, you know, vacuuming, you know, streak sweeping and all that sort of stuff. So I think we put it in back when Solomon Pon Mall came in. But I I don't I don't think it was very well thought out in terms of its broader implications. So again, I I said to them, I'd be willing to talk to Central Mass and get some ideas about what's appropriate and what whether towns included in their zone and other just general by law. But it seemed to me it it might belong in a general by law more than a zoning by law.
If we're looking at a proposal for a business use that produces a lot of noises, wouldn't that be our by law?
I think I think in that case, it certainly is. And and I think the ZBA would because it's, you know, through site plan approval, they would draw up some specs about you know, what was permissible. The the building inspector said, the problem is that measuring sound requires certain types of equipment. And he says, we don't have those. So if the noise occurs and someone complains, then how does the building inspector go and determine whether it's in excess of the the levels that we've set forth in the bylaw?
For this. That's for my mission to get the truckers to stop running their Jake brakes in front of all my houses.
So and and is that an official legal instrument that?
Says craftsman on it, so you know it's made in China.
Yeah, you can you can get them to stop on 495. That would be awesome.
So he.
All the way out there.
Oh, yeah.
Some of these idiots in the morning, you know, I'm pretty far off Route 62, but they wake me up. They just don't have any common sense at all, you know?
Well, his feeling was it ought to be a a general by law in those instances where you know, it's a neighbor and it's noise and it's, you know, a nuisance. And then the police get called. And so it's not a zoning issue.
Right. So but does that mean we're regulating leaf blowers?
Well.
I mean, that's really the big thing that I can think of that would be sustained. I mean, but chainsaws could be. I mean, there could be a lot of things.
I don't think the planning board wants to get involved with this, you know? I think those are, that's noise that's independent. So and and so then is a is a concert series in the jurisdiction of the planning board in the ZBA or is it in a town ordinance somehow, you know? I don't. I mean, those are predictable events that are going to happen on a schedule and you know, what's a what's a reasonable amount of noise and a reasonable amount of time? I don't. You know, you could say a town's scheduled fireworks is it might be a a pain in the neck to somebody and, you know, but that doesn't mean the town ought not to allow it. And if if a town wants to have a concert on the South Common or an entity like 19 Carter wants to have a concert, you know, is is there a tolerance that we ought to allow for the public good, you know, just to say it's going to be in excess of what's considered?
So it's mostly for the outdoor stuff, though, right?
I imagine.
Indoor. You don't hear it much.
Right, they started doing outdoor concerts this summer because of COVID. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. So it it is also, you know, number of events, if it's a one-time thing. That's one thing. If it's every Friday night all summer long, that's a completely different level of annoyance and.
Up there's Lynn. All right, Lynn.
All right, Lynn, you are. You have permission to speak. You just have to unmute. Lynn. So let me promote her to panelists, see if that helps. All right.
Oh, look.
Sometimes this happens with, oh, there we go. She should be showing up.
As a panelist?
Yeah.
She's not on a, there she is.
There she is.
Still mute? No.
No.
Just this, there's.
Lynn, oh.
Can she call us on a phone line?
She could.
Do we know what that number is?
I don't.
If I go to the.
My town government should be there, yeah.
Yeah.
Lynn, can you hear us?
Raise your hand. It's one six four six five five eight eight six five six.
And then is there a meeting ID? I think that's the other thing you need.
Please click the link below or or dial for higher quality, dial a number based in your current location US. Yeah, that's the number one six four six five five eight eight six five six. Webinar ID. If Lynn is still hearing me, the webinar ID is eight seven one three two nine five one one zero six. So the phone number is six four six five five eight eight six five six. And the ID is eight seven one three two nine five one one oh six. Do you want me to make a motion to spend? What was the amount? 12? I've lost that. I'll go look at that.
The.
For the payment of ACABET?
ACABET Regional Housing Consortium.
Yeah.
Twenty one thousand four hundred.
How much?
Twenty one thousand four hundred.
Four hundred.
Well, there's 12,000 in the account.
We we voted to put 12,000 into an account.
Correct.
And so we want to take that money. And then we we need another 9,400.
Yeah.
Isn't that significantly more money than we thought it was going to be?
And I don't think we'll spend it. It's it. We've asked for a significant number of hours, and I think it's it's in excess of what we'll expend. So.
But do we have to?
Well, we don't pay it all at once.
Right.
So what we could do is authorize the payment of the first quarter dues out of the 12,000 that we've set aside. Right?
Right.
Did was that an article at town meeting?
Um, I believe so because it's set it up as a as a ledger item.
This past town meeting?
Yeah.
In fiscal 2022.
May.
In May.
Yeah.
Right, not, yeah.
We set it up under regional assessments, non-school.
Yep. So.
So is it is it a simple matter of 21,400 divided by four?
No, I think we should just say. Yeah, how are we going to do this?
Let me go. Eloise has her hand up. Maybe she has a penetrating insight.
I don't know if it's penetrating, but how about you take the remainder out of the housing money that's under the jurisdiction of the planning board?
And I think we will. It's just that we need to expand it quarterly, so we probably don't need to move the money yet.
I know, but I could, you know, have fun that night.
No, no, Eloise, no.
It could happen.
Foxwoods, here you come.
Tim, this is a the proposal we got sent. It's an estimate. It's actually hourly. It's not a fixed price, right?
It's based on on what we what we utilize. I mean, there's a set.
Yeah.
That we've been assessed for.
Wasn't that like 7,000 or something like that?
Yeah, it wasn't even that much, was it?
Maybe that included some hours, too.
This is, yeah, it says, the proposal says estimated personnel cost. So I mean, we can budget whatever amount we want and, you know, use that amount and then have to go back for more money to keep going.
Well, we have the money. We have 12K in one account.
We have half of it, right?
We have half written one account and then we have 9,000, the balance in the other, the other account that's under the control of the planning board.
So what this says is that for quarter one, we owe $450, right?
Something like that.
So I'll just move that we pay quarter ones liability to the housing consortium for the invoice dated 12, 13, 21, because it's not due until January, so we're in good shape.
And the amount of $451 is that?
450, yeah.
450.
And we're going to take that out of the the.
And we'll take that out of the money that was set aside.
The 12K.
Yeah. What's the name of the account?
The name of the account it's coming out of is ACABET Regional Housing Consortium. It's code eight forty, regional assessments, non-school.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to pay the quarter one Rowan's liability to ACABET Regional. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. Janet Campbell. Not here. Carolyn McDonald. Sorry. I was looking, I was going back, I was reading off the.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Tom Sampson, aye. Motion carries in unanimous.
I wasn't sure which one of us is having an issue with that. I'm like, wait a minute.
Just, that's fine. Move along, nothing to see here. Okay, I'll fill this out. I don't know if we need says department head and department name. I suppose we can try that. If we need multiple signatures, then I'll have to get it again.
Well, if you want to. If you're coming around with that plan.
Yeah, I could do that.
Yeah.
We just sign it. Why don't we sign a bunch of them for you?
Okay.
If he if he calls in with a tropical setting in the background, we know we've made a mistake.
Not enough there, let me tell you.
Yeah, maybe.
When I do it.
I guess the payment gets made to the town of Hudson.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, can we move on?
Surely try.
We have, we have a proposal for scope of service and cost proposal, housing production plan, housing element updates and housing strategies from CMR PC. So I looked it over. It seems what we need, the only question I have is, is anybody going to bust our Aggies? Because it exceeds the $10,000 cap of not having three viable quotations.
My recollection is that master plans are are outside of that.
Okay, good.
And I'll verify that again, but that's what I believe I've been told in the past.
Well, it makes sense because you'd want somebody that was going to be consistent, you know, and.
Well, did we spend like 12,000 on the last one?
Um, I'm not sure.
With Sonnenberg?
It's that's in the ballpark, 12 to 15.
I think so.
That was a bit ago, right?
Yeah, back in eight seventeen or something. Eighteen.
I hear noise coming from Lynn. Get in there. Not really, not clearly. Sounds like aliens have happened.
Who landed?
At Lynn's house.
So for the draft proposal, what do we need to do? Sign it and accept it or can we accept it or do we need somebody else to do it?
Well, we're gonna expend Eloise's money, so we should probably ask her if she's
Okay.
She's comfortable.
Okay.
Are you comfortable, Eloise?
She's muted. You need to unmute Eloise. There you go.
You're gonna take it anyway.
But this includes the viability of creating a housing trust as well, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I support this.
Oh. Is that Lynn?
Yep. Yep, she's here.
I called in and my telephone number was listed under the attendees, but nobody would go to it.
Oh.
Oh, because we didn't know that it was you.
Okay. So should I call in again?
If you'd like, sure. Right, or we can hear you now.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, you can hear me now?
Yes.
I, I didn't know. I just saw a thing flash up. I am so sick of my internet connection. I cannot do Zoom here. I have, I'm a tick to do Zoom. Over to my daughters. Do you want to ask me anything or did you want to know if I wanted to talk to you or what?
We we talked about the, 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 the fact that there's no cap on the increases to size of pre-existing non-conforming uses.
Yeah.
And I.
There's a couple of things wrong there, if I may.
Okay.
I can send you an email, but I would eliminate section eleven twenty. Eleven twenty has to do with if we find a different use that they want to use in non-conforming for we can, um, authorize it. The only time that we're allowed to do any change in zoning, and I don't think the ZBA should be in that business. Um, for example, and I think I've mentioned this to you before, Tim. If we have, um, let's say a reclamation center junkyard type thing. And it's, and it's in a residential agricultural zone. The bylaw right now would allow us to have them put in a car dealership. Is that what you want? And then under eleven thirty, um, I would add a number D and say no non-conforming structure may be increased in gross area by more than a certain percent. Um, it used to be in there. I think it used to be fifty percent. But right now there's no cap. We ran into this at twenty-eight Oak Street where however big they could build it, as long as they could satisfy the septic system, they could do whatever they wanted to, even though they were on a postage stamp. And the reason I say floor area, um, gross, or gross area rather, floor area as it's defined in the bylaw, excludes hallways, toilets, all sorts of things, basements. So I don't, I think gross area is a better thing to use. And then eleven forty-one, I, I'm not sure if I fully understand, but basically it allows the zoning enforcement officer to allow an extended or expansion of a non-conforming structure. And I'm not, I, I think it should be either or. Either you say, okay, the bill, well, the building inspector can authorize an expansion. And if the people don't like it, they can appeal to us or in the courts. Or it needs to be eliminated. Now, some of the stuff in there is okay. For example, um, non-conforming single and two-family residential structures, it says, non-conforming single and two-family residential structures may be reconstructed, extended, altered, or structurally changed upon a determination by the zoning enforcement officer that such proposed reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change does not increase the non-conforming nature of said structure. So they don't even have to come for a special permit if the, um, zoning enforcement officer wants to allow them to expand their building. So I think before we run into it again, um, it would be well if maybe what you folks want is really in there. I don't think you want us to be able to change the use. Maybe I'm wrong. Um, you know, we don't want to go from a junkyard to a car dealership because it's less detrimental. Um, I don't know if you want the first line of defense in a single-family home to be the zoning enforcement officer. Do you want them to be able to make the decision without any hearing or anything? That, um, they can expand their use. And do you want to limit the amount of non-conformity a structure can have? You have any thoughts?
We, didn't we have a warrant article, I don't know, two town meetings ago that included this? Some limit on expansion? Maybe it wasn't non-conforming. I don't remember.
Oh, you, you were just a muddled to me. I'm sorry, missed a check.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah. We, we had, we had an article in the, one of the recent town meetings that had a limit on expansion. I thought it was the non-conforming structures.
I think it was eliminated. I don't think we voted it.
Would you remember which meeting it was?
Um, we had a list a couple of years ago and we acted on, was that when we get into the COVID stuff and two years ago and we ended up calling it down so we didn't act on all of them? And I think that may have been one we didn't act on.
Right.
So.
Remember the date? I could look in the minutes. You don't know which one.
It would have been May of, well, it ended up being June of
Twenty twenty.
Twenty, right? Did we hold it in June?
You can take a look at it. Um, I mean, if you don't and see if you find that it was passed, but it was eliminated. I know.
Yeah.
Appointment.
So I talked to Richard Lynn and I specifically about the notion of allowing an expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use. And, and I said that we did have a limit, a cap years ago. And for some reason we took that out. And he said, in his experience, in the towns that he serves, uh, a cap wouldn't stand up in court, um, for I think in these instances, you know, a commercial use that was non-conforming, that wanted to expand and met all the other zoning requirements in regard to setback and green area and stuff like that. But you're asking some questions.
A lot more things to consider than just what, um, we have, you know, from our vantage point trying to deal with the bylaw. But the problem is, is it fair that if somebody is conforming and they want to increase their house by a hundred percent, they can't?
So say that, so someone has, has got a lot that conforms and they want to increase the residential use?
Right.
By a hundred percent? Right now, they could do that.
As long as they can meet the what they have and so forth, yeah.
Right.
Even if they're closer to the sidewalk than they're supposed to be?
Well, i- if they are already, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah. Because I, I spoke to him. I said, let's say you've got a structure that's pre-existing non-conforming and it's gonna be ripped down. Do I need to leave one wall? If I want to reconstruct on that same, on the same footprint? And he said you could you could build on that same footprint. And you could expand on that footprint, provided you didn't go any closer to the street than you were already, or any closer to the side lot lines than you were already, but you could continue to build a structure larger than the one that was there if it, even though it was non-conforming, if it didn't go any closer than the pre-existing non-conforming use.
Okay, well, I, I think it's something you guys will have to mull over then. I know it's very difficult for us. You know, if you take a look at twenty-eight Oak Street, it's on a postage stamp and they more than doubled the size of the house.
But they didn't change the footprint, right?
Oh, yeah, they changed the footprint. There was some gap between two parts of the houses and they filled that in and they added on to the base.
Yeah. Talk to us about.
You folks need to mull.
But there's, there's two other questions that you've asked. One is change from a, one non-conforming use to another less detrimental non-conforming use. So w- would you say that we should just eliminate that altogether?
That would be my suggestion. It's eleven twenty, non-conforming uses.
Right.
We'd just eliminate that altogether. My personal feeling, and again, this is not a ZBA feeling, but it's my personal feeling. If you have a non-conforming use and you want to stop using it, the next use should be conforming. And again, I go back to my, you know, salvage yard. And it may not be allowed now in the bylaw anywhere. So it would be much lesser, um, of ba- this is what it says. The Board of Appeals may grant a special permit to change a non-conforming use in accordance with this section, only if it determines that such change or extension shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood. And then it says the following types of changes. Um, I guess what I'm, again, giving my example of the salvage yard. And that may be one of the most detrimental in a residential agricultural area. And now they want to put in a car dealership. Should they be allowed to? Do you consider that less detrimental? They want to put in a package store. Is that less detrimental to the residential neighborhood? There's no other place that we have allowed, although we, the ZBA has done it in the past illegally. But you can really change zoning. And I would say if non-conforming use and you, um, exist, then you can continue to exist. But if you want to change the use, then you need to go back and conform.
So if, if you're a commercial use in a residential zone and you're non-conforming because you pre-exist zoning, let's say, and the only alternative you have is to convert to a residential use?
Well, not necessarily. I, I think that, you know, if it's office space, could you continue to use it as office space? If it's retail, could you consider to use it a retail? I would say that's not a change in use. What I'm saying is, you know, if you have one use and you want to change it to a different use.
So if it was retail and you wanted to change it to office, you wouldn't allow it?
That would be my thought.
Yep.
But anyway, it's something that you have to mull.
That's a, now, okay, and then the other one is this non-conforming single and two-family residential structures. Your, your question is, should the building inspector be allowed the sole authority to determine that?
Well, I leave most of it in there. I would take the words extended and extension out of there. It says, uh, may be reconstructed, extended, altered, or structurally changed. I think that you, you, what you cited as a that the, the building commissioner ought to be able to give them a permit to reconstruct, um, structurally change, or alter the single family or two-family residence. But to extend it, I would say that, you know, it would be my thought that that would be part of the special permit granting authority.
Yeah, okay.
So why don't I put it in an email and I'll send it to you? And, uh, Tom, and you can share it with the others. And, um,
Okay.
Now it's up to you what you want to do with it.
That looks good.
You're being able to change the use, which we can't do anywhere else. I know the guest fish next to me was put in under a special permit, um, a variance, actually. Um, which, you know, body, uh, A says it has to be explicit in the bylaw. Well, in this particular circumstance in Article eleven, it is explicit. Nowhere else is it explicit um, in the bylaw. And if you want to grant to the, um, zoning enforcement officer the right to do extensions, then why do you need a special permit for non-conforming use?
Yep, good. And what about noise?
Uh, the only thing I noticed in noise, um, is 1021 dot one. It's an overlapping time. May very well just be a typo. But it goes from like, you know, eight AM to, to 11 PM and then it goes from 10 PM to eight AM or something of that nature.
Yep.
So that the same hour appears in both, both categories. I know as far as noise go, I had talked to Margaret about it. And I don't know if permitting outdoor concerts would make sense. Um, they seem to think it would be very involved. In other words, having a bylaw that allows for the permitting of these concerts that would have to be approved by the selectmen. Cause right now I can't have a pool party at my house.
Well, what we talked about with the building inspector was the difficulty in determining whether one was in violation or not, because he doesn't have the equipment. And if it's a one-time event, he wouldn't be around to determine anyway.
Right.
So then we started asking ourselves whether noise in these circumstances should be a general bylaw rather than a zoning bylaw. And so the enforcement would move away from the zoning enforcement officer to the, to the police. So it ends up being a nuisance issue.
Don't get yourself in legal trouble.
Say that again?
But just don't get yourself in legal trouble. It's better to be explicit, I think, in the bylaw as to what happened than to leave it loosey-goosey.
But is it a zoning issue or a town issue?
Another thing not approved. And then somebody says, yeah, but Charlie got to do, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. But is it, is it a zoning bylaw or a town bylaw?
It's part of the, it's a, a Berlin zoning bylaw. The noise.
Well, but should, should noise be in the zoning?
Well, that's what I'm saying. That, that again, this is a determination by you. So if you take out of there and put it as what, more of a regulation or a bylaw of the town? Wouldn't that still be the same issue?
Or you would make the zoning bylaws explicit to?
Construction.
Huh?
To construction.
To construction.
Cause that's where it grew out of. This, this.
This is what 19 Cata brought up.
Right.
They felt that the bylaw referred just to construction.
Well, that was the spirit when it was written. It was written around what was happening over at the mall.
Nor is it the way the, um, building commissioner interpreted it. There's one section within that noise that deals with construction. And it basically says during construction, you have to try to be quiet is what it says. Or be the least obnoxious you can be. But it doesn't. The way that, way it's written, it looks like it applies to every single human being in town.
Is it in an overlay district?
No.
Well, maybe it should be in the overlay.
Well, I don't know how that's going to fly a town meeting, only because the neighbors at 19 Cata Street were pretty vocal. And we had to keep going back and saying to them, we are not determining whether or not they're bad neighbors or they're violating the bylaw. We're just determining whether or not the bylaw applies to them. But it's just something else for you to look at.
Okay. Good.
So you're going to summarize this in an email, Tim and I, Lynn?
I'll summarize my feelings and then you can hash it out among yourselves, whatever you decide would be.
Perfect. Thank you.
I'm sure we'll be fine. I want to thank you for, um, uh, dealing with, you know, the gross vehicular weight that, that will be a big help to us.
Good.
I never come home full. Yes, my dump truck weighs a ton. All four. And yes, it's on the road for 24 tons, but I never have 24 tons because I'm not, when I come home, I'm empty. Okay, guys, I've taken enough of your time. Thank you for listening and I'll send off an email.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank, thank you for your persistence.
That you're willing to consider the changes.
Absolutely. Thank you for your persistence in getting on.
Yeah, well, my internet provider is a so.
Yeah.
Very frustrating.
I'm sure.
Especially when I used to work for them.
All right.
So we, we want a motion to expend from the Housing Partnership's pool of money.
You want me to hang up now, Lynn?
Yeah. Thank you so much, Ollie.
You're welcome. Bye-bye.
Motion, wait a minute, I thought we already voted, a motion to expand 450.
Yeah. Yeah. But what about the CMR PC piece?
The CMRC P, this piece is, is a proposal. So are we, you're making a motion to sign the proposal?
Well, we want to accept the proposal and vote on it next time?
I, I would think that would be your first step. You don't go to pain unless you're accept the proposal, right?
Well, we, I, I'm, I'm authorizing us to expend funds out of the, whatchamacallit. We wouldn't pay the bill yet, but essentially I'm, I'm saying, are we willing to spend 21,000 out of Eloise's money?
I, I don't think you have a choice. Don't you need to keep this updated?
Right.
State?
Well, this, when we talked to the Assabut Regional Housing Collaborative folks, they said, you are at 10%. There are towns that argue that they don't need to update their housing production plan because they are in compliance. They said, that's one alternative. And then I said, we're at a crossroads where we are unable to um, expend the funds that are coming into the Community Preservation Act for housing because we don't have a vehicle to, to utilize those funds, which would be a housing trust.
Right.
And so I said, it would seem as though working on the housing production plan at the same time that we, we deal with this housing trust issue and updating the master plan as a consolidated effort would probably make sense. And they said, yeah, given that fact, it probably does make sense for you to make this big push. Be able to go to town meeting and, and, uh, make a good, solid presentation. And, and use the, this plan and the development of this plan as a vehicle to create the dialogue that allows people to participate in the discussion. So when they come to town meeting, they're informed about why we might want to create a housing trust in the first place.
And then doesn't, if you don't have the, set aside the fact that you, you know, you, 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 you may not have to do it because you're above 10%, but does that shut the door for any grants the state may have?
That, that I think is, is one of the other issues. I think most of the money that's going to flow into this is CPA and there's going to be, you know, 50,000 a year from, from that. So.
Right. And you're more in control, we're more in control of that destiny than we are state, you know, handing out money.
But I think you're right.
Although the state has all kinds of money to hand out.
That's what they have tell, that's what they say.
No. But anyways.
Hopefully they're giving it to our conservation commission.
That's right.
The, uh, the, the, the other thing, um, that I'm more inclined to do is, is it's, it's a tool that we can use to identify where we have deficiencies in our housing stock. You know, like we know that we have a workforce housing deficiency and, you know, maybe this tool, we can use this as a tool to push that agenda. You know, if we're trying to make the case for the cluster zoning.
No, we're not calling it that.
I was going to say the C word, but then everybody else would get all up in their arms, that word.
I said to the, I said to the building inspector, if, if we had a piece of land that didn't cost us anything and we had access to water, public water, and we had access to a sewage system that we could, um, that the occupants could pay into, to participate with. Would that lower the cost of those units substantially enough? So we could put, well, he said, you probably make them all affordable if you wanted to. I said, really? He says, yeah, I think you probably could. So I think he, he feels this, this would be a ticket to at least be able to do the workforce housing we're talking about. Cause the big costs are removed.
Right.
Yeah.
That's why I think we need to chat with that guy from Devon's or wherever the hell he's from.
Okay. Yeah, we should probably set that up sometime for maybe January.
Yeah. I'll get his contact information. We'll drag him in.
Okay.
Awesome. Uh, Eloise has our hand up, Tom.
Eloise, what penetrating play do you have?
If you go through this, just make sure they use the most current 2020 federal census.
I believe that's the proposal here. Yep. 2020 census results are released, this percentage will change. So they're talking about productions.
Because that, whatever number it is, that does all towns all over the US for 10 years until the next federal census.
Okay.
So have you seen preliminary figures, Eloise?
No, I have not. I saw a preliminary population figure, but not housing.
It almost seems like we want to do this plan in such a way that it's submitted with the addendum that if the, if the housing number doesn't come in before the plan is completed, it will be added and amended when that happens.
All right. That's reasonable.
Uh, if you want, I can call Mr. Di Martino from, um, DHCD and ask him when those numbers might be available. Unfortunately, we're on a first name basis.
You could ask him in light of, we want to do a housing production plan.
Well, he's the one that oversees it.
Yeah.
Right.
So sure, I'll call him.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. So do we want to go through with the motion to accept this? Or do we want to wait until we get more information from Eloise?
I, I agree with your statement of not really having a choice. I think it's that I think it makes sense. I think it's something we need. And, um, it would be.
If, if we were tied to a date, I think it's sometime in the spring of 2022. So telling Central Mass now that we do want to proceed allows them to gear up. So maybe in Jan, late January, they could start working on it, you know, as opposed to wait until January and bumping into February or something.
That makes sense.
So is there a motion?
Well, do we, are we going to sign this agreement or what is that we're going to do?
Yeah. So right now there wasn't a motion. We, Tim started to make a motion about paying.
So I think it's a draft. So maybe, Jay, I mean, maybe what we want to do is, is say that in principle, we agree to the, to the scope and we agree to the quote and um, in January, we'd sign the formal paperwork.
Okay.
But that we'll put them on notice so they understand that we're ready and able and they can start to put it into their schedule.
Okay.
That makes sense?
To agree to the scope and cost estimate, right?
Yeah.
So we're not, not voting on that? Are you voting on that or not?
I think we should vote on it.
Yeah. So I can make a motion that we, in principle, agree to the scope and the, and the quote of 21,000, whatever. And that um, we'll pass that word, 21,400.
100. Yeah.
We'll, we'll, uh, let Central Mass know that that's the case and that if they want to forward us a formal document for signature, we'd sign that in January.
Got it.
Hey, so it's, the motion is to indicate the CNPRC that we agree to the scope and cost estimate of their draft, right?
Correct.
Yep.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Sure.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Uh, is this something that you're willing to let CMP, MCMPRC?
Yeah, I'll, I'll call Trish.
Okay. So Tim will take care of that. Uh, then I will ask you to vote on the motion. Carolyn McDonald.
Hi.
Timothy Wheeler.
Hi.
JT.
Hi.
And Tom Sanford. Hi. Motion carries in the air. That's perfect. Thank you.
That's great.
Can we back up for a second? What, what was it that we voted on before? It's confusing these two different things. We're.
We, we voted $450 to pay the first quarter association dues to the Assabut Regional Housing Collaborative.
Yeah. The numbers are the same, believe it or not, 21,400.
Okay. That's what confused me.
Right. But we didn't vote to pay 21,400. We voted to pay.
450.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
And if that's a different number, we still got to the, after the next time we meet to adjust it. So we'll be all set.
Right.
Did, did, did we get, Tim, did you send a document around from, was like a quote from the Assabut Regional Housing?
I think I sent it, didn't I?
I was just looking for it. I couldn't find it.
I didn't see it.
I sent it again.
Yeah, I know. I think I got it. So I think you may only.
Yeah, I think I might've gotten it, but I lost it. I don't know.
I'll send it again.
Post it. So.
All right. Where is it?
Excuse me.
Keeping you up?
It's been a long week already.
Well, that's the only, um, that's the last item on, uh, agenda. So unless somebody else has any other timely items.
Well, you're talking about your.
Well, you're talking about your cybersecurity assessment.
Talk all you want. I'm going to mute myself and turn my video off.
There's emails going back into October.
Put your hand to the screen like that.
I don't see anything, so.
Uh, just on the workforce housing um, stuff we've been talking about, I was speaking to my sister again about how their, um, neighborhood is developed and everything. And she said that she has a neighbor who she was pretty sure, especially since we're meeting on Zoom, who would be willing to come in and kind of talk about what their, how they worked theirs.
Yeah.
So the more information and the more ideas we can get, I feel the better.
Yep. I thought the one we did at the, the tour of cohousing was very informative.
Yeah.
A lot of stuff there that I didn't realize.
Isn't it? It's, it's a very interesting um, concept, you know, I'm not, I don't know that, and I'm sure. So Jay, you, when we were there, had said, you know, maybe we should approve another cohousing kind of situation. And, um, I don't know that that's the answer for everybody. You know, so I think having an alternative of an affordable, you know, a workforce housing, um, situation would, is, would probably be what I would advocate for. But it is, I, you know, for the people who want that sort of community, it's an amazing thing.
It was interesting. It's the second time I've asked someone at one of those places whether they thought it was a good idea to allow more of them into town. And the answer was, hmm, wasn't like, yeah.
Right. Well, I think they, they, you know, are, are aware that it's a unique.
It is. You gotta buy into that style.
Right, exactly. It's, it's not just.
Not for everybody.
Right.
Yeah, I'm just thinking if it works so well for them, why wouldn't they encourage others to do the same thing?
Well, I think they're being realistic.
Right, because if you build another one and it doesn't work, that sours the whole thing.
Exactly.
Or could be competition too.
Yeah, so you said you were going to, was it Denmark?
Yeah, in Sweden. In Iceland, unfortunately. But I never saw any.
Amazing.
I didn't see any, uh, cohousing. I was booked up full-time.
No.
Yeah, and it was freezing cold and the wind was blowing so hard you could barely walk. Much nicer here.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I would imagine December is not exactly the peak tourist season for those areas.
The most amazing thing actually about Copenhagen is that, uh, it's, the bike situation is, has been there so long. It's like so embedded in the city and so well-developed that you really can get along. As long as you're staying inside the city, it's, it's a great mode of transportation. It's very heavily used. It's funny that there's only probably, I know of two cities in the world, though that's the case, that, and Amsterdam.
Amsterdam is amazing, the bikes.
Yeah, I mean, there's traffic lights for the bikes and if you try to walk in their path, they jingle the little bells and run over you. I don't know how you can ever get there. If you have an existing city and you haven't designed that all in, I don't know how you get there. Maybe you do it within a neighborhood, then I could do it within a city or town.
Eliminate the cars.
All right, well, that's what I was going to say. There are old enough cities where they were not developed for cars.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, the cars and the vacuum gets filled by bikes.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then Iceland, of course, affordable housing, one of the nice things is you don't have to worry about heat because you just.
Yeah, that's all geothermal.
Pipe in one of those spewing things coming out of the ground and run to radiators.
Yep.
All right, kids.
All right.
Are we all set?
You want a motion?
Sure.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing, I'll ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
JT.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye. Thank you all. I'll see you on Saturday at some point in time.